And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no one signed up for open forum this evening, so we can go right into the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have regular session minutes from February 11th, executive meeting minutes February 11th, regular session minutes from February 20th, regular session minutes February 25th, executive session minutes from February 25th. We also have correspondence, the minutes that were received and approved from the Health and Wellness Subcommittee from January 22nd, and we have school committee resolutions from the Exeter West Greenwich District regarding student transportation. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
On February 20th, we had down, Brendan was an administrator at that meeting.
Are you asking to remove those for?
Just that one, yeah.
Okay, so just the February 20th. So could I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, pulling out the February 20th meeting minutes.
Just one change.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so February 20th?
Oh, just it says administrators, that Brendan Andrade was an administrator and he was actually a parent, so we could just change that.
I mean, I did notice that, but he was present and he is an administrator. That's how I viewed it.
Okay, because I asked a question and he didn't answer it, that's why I figured, because he was there as a parent.
Okay, I, it's not a big deal, we can, we can move it.
Okay.
Mrs. Mendy, just strike Mr. Andrade from the administrator list from the 20th. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from February 20th with that amendment?
Motion to accept minutes of February 20th is amended.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda or under general business, we have an update on the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. Mrs. Sherman?
Thank you. So just to share with the committee, we're making progress with Health and Wellness. We've had two meetings. Some of the things that we're working on, we have a budget application into RIDE to see if we can get a $10,000 grant to support materials that would provide education for student and staff wellness. So that's in the works. I believe that's due at the end of June. And the Farm and Sea to School Institute is an application that we submitted at the very beginning of March, which is a really exciting opportunity. It's a way to bring some professional development to our district, K to 12, and it could really establish some farm-to-table initiatives within the district. It could tie in nicely with the plant science CTE at the high school. So that application is in. I think we don't hear an update on it for maybe another month or two, but we are making progress. So feel free to reach out if you have any questions or need anything put on the agenda as we tackle health and wellness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up for item B, we're going to approve layoffs. Dr. Senkione.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your packet are on your desk tonight. I'm providing you with a document to address later on in this evening. You're going to be asked to vote a number for the FY '26 budget request. And to be able to balance that amount that you're going to be requesting, it's going to require us to make some layoffs, which needs your approval this evening. The list in front of you, I want to make sure you understand, it's not always the position. Some people get bumped because of seniority and/or certification. On this list this evening, it's 10 members of NEA, three members of Council 94, and then in the back of your list, you see that there's three people retiring. So there are people going into those positions, so the financial savings are there also. But I also want to remind the committee that these layoffs alone at this point do not resolve our, the budget number that you vote. We know the rest will come out of personnel, and we're working with leadership of NEA and Council 94 to make those final decisions. But this evening, I'm asking you to vote the layoffs of 10 NEA members and three members of Council 94, as listed on your document.
Dr. Senkione, can you clarify the numbers you just referenced? 10 NEA, how many Council 94?
Three.
So before we go any further, I'm seeing a list of 12 individuals and one open position.
Yeah, correct. So two NEA members with an open position.
Okay. Are you, as part of this motion, looking to eliminate that open position?
Yes.
Okay. So if we could get a motion to accept Dr. Senkione's recommendations on layoffs of 12 employees and the elimination of one open position at Ranger. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion with regret.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask.
And bearing in mind that the names here?
Right. There is a special educator and a social worker at one of the elementary schools. They were just hired a couple of weeks ago. Why were they hired? It just seems...
Well, they replaced people who took positions in other districts, so the positions that we need for the remainder of the school year, when they were hired, we were very transparent and clear with them that, you know, it was potential that they would be laid off.
Andrew, looking at a librarian and a band teacher. That's going to leave no band at that school?
No, it's not always the, it's not always the person, it's someone's bumping into that position.
Okay. And is the same thing with the librarian, the elementary school?
Well, it's, the elementary school library position will remain, someone is bumping into that position.
Okay. Okay.
One question. The Ranger School position that's vacant right now, not being built, is that a teacher, a classroom teacher?
No, it's a TA, part-time TA.
Okay, thank you. Have nothing else?
Anyone else? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. This, that's part of the not fun part of this job. Okay, next we will go to letter C, approve homes, accept math grant, Math Matters Rhode Island Grant. Dr. Senkione.
So this is the third iteration of the grants that come out of Learn 365, the Governor's Initiative, and so we've been fortunate with the first two to make some differences with our students. So this time, this grant is coming out, it's specifically related to math through K to eight students, and the services have to be offered beyond the school day, so whether during vacations, after school, or during the summer. We had a lot of success last year with offering some summer programs, we plan to do the same. So I ask you this evening to accept the grant of $40,000, and then we'll finalize it and submit it in.
So I have a question. Is this really something for us to accept, or should it be accepted by the town council? Because it is the municipality that...
Receives the funds.
Receives the money and made the application as well, I think.
No, we make the application, they sign it, because they received the funds. And we write the grant, and they receive the funds.
So should they not be the ones to vote to accept it?
We can confer with them on that. I would ask tonight, did you do it just as a preliminary, or make sure it's covered?
I do provide the expense report. So we kind of do all the work, they just kind of handle the acceptance of the funds and the reporting based on what I provide.
And that's what my concern is.
Yeah.
If they're officially the ones accepting the grant, they should be the ones voting on it, I would think. But I don't have any problem with us taking a vote, but I would follow up with the town council and make sure that if they're supposed to vote on this, that they do.
Yeah, we'll speak to Town Minister, Mr. Jones, and see how he feels about it. We've been working a constant with him.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant.
I'll second.
Could I ask for an amendment that we make a motion to accept a grant in the amount of at least $40,000?
I'll amend my motion to accept the math grant in the amount of $40,000.
And there's a second? Second? Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, next we have item D, approve homeschool request for 2024-25 school year.
I'll take that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So in your packet this evening, you have three families who have applied for homeschool. Assistant Superintendent Crager has reviewed this and recommends your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the homeschool request?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
Do you think going forward, we could get a breakdown of what grades these are?
Sure.
And then, this is just a suggestion, I'd like to see too, after all the budget stuff is taken care of, if we could reach out to those families and find out if anything could be done to bring them back?
Yeah, we did that this, this past summer, we did that. So it's a typical course of action for us, so happy to, we always do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask that we move items E, F, and G to the bottom of the agenda and move up items H through K to discuss those first.
I'll make a motion that we move items H, I, J, and K to the next on the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move over to item H, and that would be the February 2025 Budget to Actual Report. Mr. Andrade?
So in front of you tonight, you have your February Year-to-Date FY '24 Budget to Actual Report. As the memo states, year-to-date spending totaled $23.2 million, or 64% of our FY '25 budget, with the primary areas being personnel compensation, benefits, special education, and out-of-district tuition. As we continue to analyze spending patterns for the year's remainder, we identified a couple additional areas projected as seed budgetary expectations. Obviously, tonight, there's quite a few, but that has to do with really digging into the numbers when we're building our FY '26. So when we did so, when we were looking at severance, we project a savings of about $7,000 by year-end. That's for severance payouts and sick pay off non-severance payments. Personnel compensation benefits, medical premiums, pensions, and unemployment. Pensions, unemployment insurance, and workman's comp will net a projected savings of about $26,000. We should see a reduction in a recent allocation of $23,000 to health and dental premiums and $17,000 in pension, but we will see a small increase of $3,000 for unemployment insurance and $11,000 for workman's comp. Workman's comp was significant driver due to an audit adjustment from the 23-24 year. They do this every year, the Rhode Island Trust does an audit, and then they come back with findings, if you, basically if your budget expectations exceeded what was provided as a preliminary number back in between May and July of the previous year. Next is the Medicaid Claims Provider Payments. This is a contract we use that basically goes, does all the reimbursements for us from Medicaid. We projected a budgetary expectation of $9,000. I think the budgetary line was zero in the beginning of the year, due to just maybe the prior business manager was going to use a, the Medicaid reimbursements itself as the offset to the expense. However, due to UCOA data, you always have to record the expense to the line item. So even though I am recording the expense to the line item and reporting a expectation increase of $9,000, we do, we do, we are expected to exceed revenue expectations, increasing the claims processing expense. Right now, we brought in, as of February 28th, we brought in $244,000 and change. So we projected in the beginning of the year $250,000. So obviously, with a couple more months remaining, we, we should see an increase there. However, there's a lot of shuffle within the federal funding area, so I would advise that we continue projecting the deficit as it, with no potential increase in revenue right now. So going to the next page, you had rental equipment and vehicles. We projected an increase of $5,000, primarily driven to equipment rentals for repairs and replacements, dumpsters and copier expenses. Transportation statewide and out-of-district tuition increased quite a bit. The transportation statewide increased by $67,000 due to increased usage. Out-of-district tuition is projected to increase by $113,400, mainly due to a district that had to adjust the number in their Q1 and Q2 billing cycle, and then the variance is due to being under budget. This UCOA group has a total net increase of $188,400. Supplies and property, several proposed budget transfers were in this category, which resulted in overall net increase of $5,206 this month, primarily for plumbing and heating supplies for in-house repairs. So with all that said, total net results of projected deficit from last time we reviewed this in January as year-to-date was, this is additional $166,746, or $623,615 grand total, again primarily driven by statewide transportation and out-of-district tuition. Based on that, you guys have other pages behind it. Since there was quite a few, I did highlight them in yellow, all the, all the different allocations. So based on the, based on the policy, I didn't know if you wanted to accept all these at once.
Are the items highlighted in yellow, the transfers that you're identifying this month only?
Majority are, but not all. These would be year-to-date.
What is the orange on the second page? What is that showing?
That's just, that's just for personal, personal reasons, but nothing to this conversation anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So I think our policy has us voting to approve movement within the major categories as opposed to movement, movement between major categories as opposed to movement within a category.
Yeah, that's why I kind of spelled it out, so you can see each category in the memo, you know?
And, and the question I have is if we were to take a vote tonight, how will we track future movement?
Yeah, I could just give you month-over-month and show you, you know, again, spell it out in a memo or, or on Excel spreadsheet. Because I have it saved by every month, so every report I've given to the school committee and town council, I've saved, so I can see exactly what changed.
Perhaps that's what we need to do, is have just a separate breakdown of what you're recommending on a monthly basis.
Yeah, that's why I tried to spell the memo.
Or even, is it monthly that we, we put in the policy, or is it quarterly? I'm trying to remember. Or did it even specify?
I think it was monthly.
I think it was monthly.
Yeah, because I think we were trying to match the, the election vote.
Okay. So in, in an effort for us to not do something that we have to undo later, perhaps what we can do is ask you to go back, put together the summary of previous months, get us to date with it at vote for each.
Okay.
And then we can move from there.
Okay.
Does that?
Any objection? That's fine with me. Any objection for me sending us to the town council so they have it?
No.
Can, can you, so you're saying our original budget, if, Madam Chair, if I may? Was $35,007, and the $623,615 is what we're projected to? So I guess proposed budget transfer from where? I mean, we're overspent.
Well, that's, that's the...
There's nothing to approve. I mean, that's money that we're going to have to have, ask, you know, the council is going to have to cover, and we're going to have to set up some sort of repayment plan from them, but there's nothing, we're not transferring anything, I mean, net.
Indeed, yeah.
Net, we're short. So I, I, that, when I think of budget transfers and I think about what the council does is, they'll move from, you know, trash over to police, or they'll move from their contingency fund over to that. We're not really doing that because we're, we're just short overall. So I guess I'm not clear on what we're trying to approve here.
And this is the, the issue we have with the policy we just adopted, right?
Correct.
Because it does say clearly, at no time does, do the transfers not net out to zero. And in this case, this year, we already know, we're not going to net out to zero. Is the Finance Subcommittee going to be meeting anytime soon? Do you have anything on the books? Maybe you guys can come up with a plan for how to manage this.
Yeah, because again, right now, we're not, we're not covering our budget, so we're not transferring something from one major category to, to cover the expenses in another category because the entire budget is short.
Correct.
So, so yeah, I guess we'll, we can, after the April 15th, we can definitely, the Subcommittee can meet, and we can just try to figure out if or what we need to do, given this situation with our policy.
Right. Thank you. Brendan, on your memo, because I know it's, you intend to send it out, under the second bullet fiscal highlights, there's a word reminder there. Is that correct?
What, what was it? Sorry. Under the second bullet?
Second bullet, first sentence, as we continue to analyze spending patterns for the year's reminder?
Oh, yep. Yep, reminder.
Thank you. Might want to get that taken through. Okay, does anyone else have any questions? All right, next we have Tiverton Town Council Capital Request. Mr. Andrade?
All right, so in front of you this morning, you have four requests. These are all projects that we consider emergency at this point in time. First is the chimney demolition change order. So when, when originally we went out to bid and had site, site reviews, we, two companies showed up, and to the best of our knowledge, we assumed the chimney was only three layers. And I provided a picture for you folks in the packet this evening, but you can see it's, it's actually five layers. So this is adding extra labor costs, dumpster costs, and equipment time. With these unforeseen circumstances that change the original scope, we still find it justified to allow this change order. This vendor is still the lowest bidder even after this increase. So we are kindly asking you tonight to approve an additional $38,800 before being placed on the next town council agenda. The new total would be 103,800. It's a difference of about $8,000 from the next bidder. So still again...
Even with the change order?
Even with the change order, so it's still the lowest bidder. I'll go through each one and then ask you guys to vote, if that works out, Madam Chair.
I think so.
Okay. So next is digitalizing student records. Currently, we use an extremely outdated microfiche that is well beyond its useful life. The guidance department is having real struggles preserving our student records in the digital age with well over 150,000 images and counting. So we went out, we went out to look for the lowest quote. We have not gone out to bid yet, but we went out to look for the lowest quote, and Conica Minolta was $10,746. So we're asking you tonight to approve this amount to be placed on the next council agenda. Just to add to that, this is only going to help us for past data. So there is some, there is some files within the microfiche that are so old that we lost the resolution. So however, we do have a future plan, which is about $1,000 a year, using a software called Box, that would be able to help us in the future. However, we can't use that now because of the microfiche process. You can only use that with PDF documents when you save it to the storage solution. So really cheap future plans, but we need to at least take, take action on the previous, the previous seven years. Third is a sprinkler system inspection. I thought this was a good one to add to the emergency, just based on our current projected deficit. We do have some costs upcoming that, I did speak back in November with Mr. Carter and more recently Chief Jones as the acting town administrator. We acknowledge this could be a potential gaming revenue request to help the schools offset $8,500. Right now, this is only covering the cost for the sprinkler system inspections that are completed every five years. This is required and reviewed by the local state fire marshal, Captain Murphy of the Tiverton Fire Department. This will take action in April, so that's why I'm asking now to consider approving this request, and hopefully graciously, the council will consider as well, in the amount of $8,500. Last but not least is a baseball dugout fencing. We are honored to welcome back Coach Matt McGuire back to the Tiverton High School baseball program. With his extensive experience and knowledge of baseball at all levels, he brought a concern that we believe is a significant safety concern, especially after speaking to the trust, our insurance provider, and the Rhode Island Athletic League. Mr. McGuire advised us that almost every high school and college baseball field that he has seen has installed a minimum three-foot fence or protective netting to be placed on the field side of the dugouts. To that end, we received an article from Rhode Island Athletic League that showed NCAA report that this is now a mandatory requirement in all three divisions as of January 1st, 2025. So with this request, I kindly request you to approve a not-to-exceed number of $5,000. We did gather the first quote last week that came in around between $2,500 and $3,500. That was a verbal quote Coach McGuire received. I did communicate with Chief Jones. There is potential to utilize both teams, being the DPW and the school department maintenance team, could install this in-house. However, I think it's good to accept a not-to-exceed number of $5,000, even if it's just for materials later, later down the road. With that, thank you for all these considerations and continued support, and hope you would agree these are pretty essential and safety concerns that we could address quickly.
So we have four separate items here. I don't see a grand total anywhere, so we'll have to take four individual votes here. So let's get started on the chimney demolition change order. Do I have a motion to accept the chimney, the chimney demolition change order in the amount of $38,800? And this will be for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, time for discussion, Mrs. Pavel?
I have, my question is, the chimney, the existing chimney, is this contractor going to demolish that chimney?
Yeah, he's still actively working, knowing that this still has to go in front of the school committee and if approved, the town council.
Because when I looked at the picture...
Yeah, that's the original picture. It's already, it's already below the roof. Yep.
Okay. That had been repaired and repaired and repaired because...
Yeah, it's five layers.
Yes, because that was what administration wanted to do, to try to save money. We just kept putting another layer and another layer, and in the end, we probably wasted money, but that's all, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, to the best of our knowledge, we thought there was only three layers at most, but ended up being five.
Really looks bad, yeah.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, so all those in favor of the chimney demolition change order request? Okay, we have five. Item number two, digitizing student records. Do I have a motion to approve the request of $10,746 to purchase a Conica Minolta?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second? Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can I?
Go ahead, Kim. I'll go after you.
No, go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, how long do we have to go back to retain records? Is there...
Seven years.
So it's just seven? We go back seven?
We keep them all. We keep transcripts of every student.
Do we?
We go back, we do.
Oh, yeah.
By law, we only keep...
But there, but law, yeah, because it's, so it's like, kind of like IRS records, but we only have to by law, but we, we just keep them all.
Yeah.
Most districts do.
My concern is, this is going to be a three-month process between the time the records leave the high school and go and come back, so it's a three-month process. What's going to be done about, for anybody that wants a transcript during that time when those transcripts are gone? Do you have anything?
Good question. I, I don't know it's going to leave and come back. I don't have that answer to be...
Yeah, it said, when I read through it.
I'm just, you know, this information is just given to us as a thought to consider, and we consider this a priority based on, you know... And we consider this a priority based on, you know, data that has been requested and we can't see it.
I know, yeah.
Luckily, by law, we're covered, but as Peter just said, we would like to keep, preserve all records, you know?
And this estimated cost to package and transfer, transport and destroy the other files, that's an additional cost?
What page do you want?
It's page three? Because I think that's a good idea. I don't know how they planned on getting them.
That's estimated cost. We won't, we won't enroll in that. This, the 10,746 is the nine boxes of student records we have, 62 rolls of microfilm and 36 CDs. This is estimated cost if we decided a white glove packaging service and, and white glove transportation supplies. Is that what you're referring to?
I am. I'm just concerned if they leave, at least do you know that they're in their custody when they leave the building? I don't know how they planned on sending them out, but it's confidential information, so it should be safeguarded.
Yeah, we, when we, when we do that, we have a policy in place where they would sign off on our records requests for that reason.
And Conica is going to destroy the old records? It looks like it's not mentioned in their cost, but-
Correct.
Reading through it, looks like it might be.
Talking to Mrs. McGuire about that specifically, they would not, they won't be destroying it. We would be destroying it. We don't need that extra cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
What else do I want to ask? Okay, I think that was it.
My only comment here is, we are proposing this as a quote-unquote "emergency" capital request, and my question is, how did this rise to that level without coming up prior to now?
So as I just mentioned, we did have, it did come up earlier. We didn't see it fit into the 10-year scheme, but we just had a couple individuals ask for transcripts, and when they went to be viewed, they were blank because of how old they are. We just don't want to see that happen to anyone else, especially within that seven-year period.
And I can attest.
By law.
They have asked, we have asked for years-
Yes.
Working in guidance office, I can say that.
Yeah, we had an individual, I think it went back to 2004.
I've done some early 1900s.
Those two years were blank.
1980s, yeah.
Four, five. So that's why I consider emergency to preserve what we do have and get on top of it as quickly as possible before we lose others.
Okay. All right, so are there any other questions?
Yes, I have just a procedural question. We can vote on this, even though it didn't go out to bid? Number two?
You're giving me permission to go out to bid for 10,746.
And to take the request to the town council.
Yeah, and I have to go to the town council first.
That's really the limit of what we can do here.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the sprinkler system inspection that Mr. Andre described. Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Andre's request to move forward with the sprinkler system inspections in the amount of $8,500?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Of course, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Is this going to be done during the summer?
No, this is going to be done during April vacation.
Oh, okay, good, because they said they have to turn off the alarms. Why does it say deficiency? Was there a problem or is it an overdue inspection?
We, this is an inspection that's due every five years.
Okay, I just was, total deficiency repair cost. I was just wondering, is it deficiency?
What page are you on?
Just the first, it's on every page, it's at the bottom.
Oh, I honestly, I agree with you. I think that's just how the company wrote it up, but if you look at the description, it's for the inspection itself, the five-year inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're not repairing, as I said in my memo, I didn't say it aloud, but they're not repairing anything. Potentially, they could suggest it during the inspection, but right now, this is just the inspection's price for all five schools.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you. One more. Baseball dugout fencing. Mr. Andre explained to us the desire to put in a request not to exceed the number of $5,000 for a capital purchase of baseball dugout fencing with the hopes that we can save some money on installation. So do I have a motion to approve the baseball dugout fencing in the amount of not to exceed $5,000?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on this one? Kim?
I just have a question. Kim, you have a question?
No.
Okay. Good. I'm a little confused because there's a reference to the Interscholastic League and the NCAA. Those are two different organizations, so it's required in NCAA?
It is required in-
But where are high school?
Yeah, what it says is the Rhode Island Athletic League gave me the NCAA report saying they would consider this as a top safety concern at Tiverton.
So like, does the Interscholastic League-
They do not require it, NCAA does.
Yeah, okay.
Basically saying if one organization's requiring it, we all should. And as I said, Coach McGuire said almost every district in Rhode Island has it for baseball and softball.
Sounds like a common sense thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Yes, we have it. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Andre, on that. All right. Next up, item J, review and vote to approve the FY '26 budget request. Who's got my memo? So I'll, I'll open things up, and I know Mr. Andre is the one who prepared all of this, and I'll let him speak to it as well, but I just want to, especially for the benefit of our new members, today is March 18th. We are expected to hand over our appropriation request to the town administrator no later than March 19th, which is tomorrow, which is why we'll be here this evening taking our votes. And then a week after that, the town administrator will send the unified budget that'll include both our budget request and the town council's budget request to the budget committee. And, you know, going through the, the process, they will also generate their revenue estimates to send to the budget committee by mid-April. Somewhere between the time that the budget committee receives these requests and finish their work, they need to have their budget committee recommendations back to the town council by April 25th. So I would expect that we would be asked to appear before the budget committee and/or the town council sometime in the next month. And I'm sure you'll let us know when that request has been made. Just to take it one step further, by May 13th, the town council is expected to adopt the preliminary unified budget. Sometime after that, they are expected to hold the public hearing, and they have a deadline of June 30th to adopt the unified budget. We have time after that to complete our work, once we have our appropriation and we know what it is, to ensure that we have balanced our budget, if you will, to what the appropriation is. So the amounts that you see this evening on your first page, the FY '26 appropriation request has two, two columns of numbers, one from FY '25, which was approved, and then what the current request is, what the change is, and of course, the percent change. The request that we are recommending, that the administration is recommending, is that we ask the town for a 4% budget increase. So that results in a calculation of, to total, when you add the increase, the expected increase in state aid, which right now is quite minimal at $7,000, that would make our FY '26 budget request for operations to be $35,239,328. In addition to that request, we will also be submitting a capital request in the amount of $312,605, which would be very similar to the, what we did last year, requesting textbooks and computer hardware. And Mr. Andre, I'll allow you to go into further detail on that as we go forward. I just wanted to set the stage that I will be asking that we take two votes this evening, one for the $35 million for the appropriation and one for the $312,000 for the capital request. That would bring our full FY '26 budget at this time to $35,551,933, which is what the detailed budget by line item adds up to in the proposed FY '26 budget.
And that is a 3.38% increase?
Net.
Net, okay.
So I will, could I, before we start our detailed discussion, I would like a motion to approve the FY '26 appropriation request for the operating fund of $35,239,328.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Okay. For my next vote, I will ask that we, we have a motion to request $312,605 from casino gaming revenue for the purchase of technology hardware and textbooks and the like. And again, Mr. Andre can go into the detail on that. Do I have a motion for that $312,605?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Why don't we have this discussion now? What exactly do we have to make up that $312,000?
So it's similar requests as last year. The only change is this year, I'll go through both, but the only changes this year are this, the middle school social studies and the high school social studies has curriculum that needs to be updated. We've been going on a one-year plan. If we move forward with capital, we can purchase a six-year plan that is much cheaper. Your ROI is three years, so it makes sense financially to take this move, and you're talking about 17, 17,000 for one and 24,000 for the other. That's really the biggest change. The other big change is we do need an additional copier. We might be able to utilize Fort Barton, so that number could come down a little bit, but that's minimal cost. You're talking 3,500 bucks. And then the change is the same. Chromebooks at 118,000, a couple softwares, same software as this last year, the SHI, that's Google domain. There's other, other textbooks that we purchased last year, would be the same ones this year to replace, library books, minimal cost. And then last but not least is computers for the staff as well. That pretty much makes up the, the total. So again, it's the same request as last year. The only change is specifically considering a six-year plan for those social studies at middle school, high school, rather than a one-year plan. And then, can't remember the, what I just said. Yeah, social studies and-
Chromebooks, software-
Yep, yep.
Et cetera. So I'm going to recommend that you put together the documentation before this goes to the town council-
Yep, we have it all documented.
-in writing exactly what we're requesting.
Yep, yep, we have it all ready.
That makes up this $312,000. Are there any other questions, talking points? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. And great job, by the way. All right. Item K, accept life, safety and emergency action grant. Mr. Andre.
Yep, so in accordance with the policy of the school committee, I'm submitting this memo to formally request the committee's approval to accept the life and safety and emergency action grant awarded by the trust for $1,977. This grant will support the purchase of heavy-duty two-way radios to replace the current radios for emergency personnel teams at each school, along with a couple other updated fire safety signals, mostly at the two elementary school, Ranger and Baccassett. The funds will be utilized in compliance with the grant's terms and conditions, and then oversight will be forwarded to the trust before receiving payment.
Do I have a motion to accept this life, safety and emergency action grant in the amount of $1,977?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, approved, thank you. All right, so we've come to the end of those items. We're going to back up now to item E. Vote to accept donation, the amount of $13,850. I am going to go ahead and make this motion. I did speak to this in the chair's remarks at our last meeting, but I would like to actually officially accept this donation at this time. So my motion is to accept this donation in the amount of $13,850 to be used to pay the expenses associated with the superintendent's search. This donation was made as the result of fundraising efforts that were made by, by Chair Deb Polish. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Because there was so much confusion about this, I'd like to just quickly discuss it. So at our February 11th meeting, in open session, I understood the concerns of several of my members with us spending money in a deficit situation. I said in public twice that I would take on either getting grants or fundraising to cover the cost. I did just that. Combination of my money and reaching out to friends, I was able to fundraise the $13,850. Not unlike any one of us, any one of our parents, any one of our grandparents, aunts, uncles, you know, I've fundraised dozens and dozens of things over the years, you know, because sometimes we just have to, including $5,000 for fireworks when we had our graduation during COVID, fundraised for school uniforms, fundraised for a, you know, field day equipment. I will add that both counselors Paul and Edwards did reach out to our attorney, Mr. Scungio, with the town's attorney on copy. Mr. Scungio stated that fundraising was not illegal, it was not against policy, and it was not unethical. So hopefully with that behind us, I'm, I'm really excited for us to move forward and select our new superintendent with our consultant.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
In the agenda, you say for use towards the expense.
Yes.
So that means there's probably going to be more expense?
No. At this time, no.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, four to one, thank you. All right, next up, we have the vote to approve the agreement between Tiverton Schools and the New England School Development Council, also known as NESTIC, for the superintendent's search consulting services. So in your packets, you have the, the agreement that was sent to you with your packets. It details essentially what the services are expected to be. And it also, at the end, you have the total fixed consulting fee of $11,600, fixed expenses of $2,160 for a grand total of $13,760. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement between the Tiverton School Committee and NESTIC?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Do I have votes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. Opposed?
Is it possible to wait? Okay. No.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Kim and I, why didn't you?
Okay. Okay, it's approved, thank you. All right. Taking care of those votes, we now have the last item on our agenda this evening. And we, I would, it is my pleasure to introduce- And we, I would, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Victor Mercurio, who will be our superintendent search consultant. And he's generously offered to join us this evening for a bit of an organizational discussion. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Mercurio.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dr. Senkione, members of the community here with us tonight. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. It's bringing back wonderful memories of my time in East Greenwich as superintendent. Tuesday nights would not be the same unless I was sitting with the school board having these kinds of discussions, so I appreciate the discussion. So just a little bit of background about me. I know that you've had the opportunity to look at and review the contract with the New England School Development Council, NESTEC. Obviously, the role that I serve as a consultant to facilitate the superintendent's search process. So this is year 36 for me in education. I started as a middle-level and high school English language arts teacher in Warwick. I did that for a number of years and then became an assistant principal, principal of Pilgrim High School, director of secondary programs, assistant superintendent. That was the first 20 years of my time there. And then the last 10 years of 30 in the K-12 space was as superintendent of schools in East Greenwich, Rhode Island, or as I say, when I come to this side of the state overseas, back that way. So at that time, while I was superintendent, I began serving as an adjunct professor in the Education Leadership doctoral program at Johnson and Wales University, teaching elementary and secondary school leadership. So I, when I finished my time as superintendent of schools in East Greenwich, I became a full-time faculty member in the Ed Leadership doctoral program, teaching strategic finance and organizational theory and behavior, as well as developing elementary and secondary law and policy, which I know those things are near and dear to your heart if you serve on a, on a board. So I served in that role as faculty member since January of 2020. Now, I did not know there was going to be a global pandemic, so stepped away from the difficulties of being a school superintendent right before COVID hit. So I've been doing that role right up until September of this year. I'm still a full-time faculty member, but currently I'm also the interim director of the Ed Leadership doctoral program at JWU. So the journey has been a long and a pleasant one, but I'm very happy to be here with you this evening. I do know that Madam Chair has sent you an overview packet that I would like to go over with you tonight, as well as a draft timeline. I'm certainly happy, once, once I'm done presenting, to answer any questions, comments, or concerns that you might have about anything that I've said or the process in general. So one of the things that is, is really critical to consider is that the search really, while we're facilitating, it is yours. And the school committee works with, obviously, the consultant through the New England, New England School Development Council. And one of the things that we look for, that I look for as a consultant for you, is to have the board, the committee, pick a liaison that would work directly with me throughout every step of the process. Obviously, I will come back here to present and provide updates as to where we are in the process with you, so that you understand every step of the way, where we are in the process, where we are incrementally in the grand design of the entire process from the beginning tonight, right up to the end. So one of the key pieces is obviously, when you look at the timeline, and as you can imagine, we're not the only district that's going to be looking for someone to lead the district during this timeframe. It's a very busy time of year, especially as it relates to trying to find a district leader or building leaders, what, what have you. So the timeline that you have before you this evening is a timeline that looks at this process within a 90-day timeframe. So if you look at the document, the draft document of that timeline, and I can talk about particulars about each aspect of that timeline in a moment, but when you look at that, you will see at the top in gold that the point of appointment looks to have 90 days from now, which, as fate would have, it seems to be your June meeting, around the 19th of June, that you would be looking to put a gavel down on an appointment, obviously, in, in public for the individual at that point. And everything that we are doing for the next three months would be working back from that, from that point. So as you look at that, tonight obviously marks the, the start of a, of a very robust and very aggressive timeline process. Having said that, one of the things that is critical is that we get the information out there that we're actually looking for as superintendent early and often. So one of the powerful pieces of the New England School Development Council is that when the posting is available, we're going to post it nationally and regionally. We will send a personalized information letter, and that we also have a wide, wide national recruiting network. And we're also looking to target, obviously, a wide net, groups of folks. We've also had, in the course of several searches, we've had applicants come not only from the United States, but also from all over the world, who would express interest seeing those postings and pursuing a position like this. So when we advertise the position, we're looking to put it on School Spring, which is, as many of you know, a site that is used quite frequently for postings of positions, especially in the education space. We also would post on Ed Week on an online announcement, the American Association of School Superintendents as well, and looking as well to place it on the National Alliance of Black School Educators, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, and a professional diversity network. And the outreach is viewed by literally thousands of professionals. We want to make sure that we cast as wide a net as possible. When we recruit candidates, when we look to recruit them, professionals will contact us. My name as a liaison and consultant for you will be on that, on that posting. And I will share with you that in two searches that we did a year ago, my name was actually on the posting. And if you're around Rhode Island for 36 years, you tend to know folks. So they would reach out and ask questions about the overall search and kind of where we are in that process. We would also make sure that we would check our, NESTEC has, as you know, NESTEC has a, a website that is also used as a point of reference for professionals who are looking to pursue a different option for their career. And NESTEC sends things out on a regular basis that notes executive vacancies, not only at the district level, but also at the building level, and also to a various set of consortium, of which multiple educators are a part. As part of the process, one of the things that we do is that we, we look at a community-wide needs assessment. One of the things that I've always said is that if you're going to look for the next leader of a school district, you cannot ingest something that large and not be something very different at the end of it. So it's an opportunity for the community to come forward, for you as the board to elevate and amplify voice, so that individuals can, can speak to what they would like to see in terms of the skills, competencies, knowledge, and habits of mind of the next leader of the Tiverton Public Schools. So in order to do that, what we, what we propose is doing a series of focus groups. And in this day and age, it seems like post-COVID, those focus groups work best if we do those in hybrid format, but obviously, that's up to you. And we've done them both face-to-face on the ground and working with your tech support in the district to do those through, through Zoom meetings. And they, they can take place at any time. We've done them during the course of the day. We've done on-ground meetings in community centers, in schools, directly, so that, that individuals who are working in the district will have the opportunity to sit face-to-face. Or if they choose to do that online, they can do that as well through those Zoom meetings. The reason that we do this is that we develop a candidate profile. So we, we conduct these six focus groups, whether they are online or they are face-to-face. We'll look at the qualitative data that's brought forth through those focus groups, and we develop a candidate profile that really mines the major themes that would be part of that profile, that a, a screening committee, and I'll get to the work of the screening committee in a moment, that the work that the screening committee would use as it looks to screen applicants for the process. So as I mentioned before, we work with the school committee every step of the way. We have a, we would ask you to appoint a liaison that would work directly with me. Obviously, as, as a school committee, by Rhode Island general law, you have care, custody, and control of the entire district. You've been discussing those very matters throughout the course of your meeting this evening. So anything that would be brought forward to you as a result of going through a screening process with a committee, you have the final say as, as the school committee. We are working with you. This is your search. One of the things that NESTEC does as well is that NESTEC is going to be receiving the applications. When individuals apply, they are applying through the NESTEC portal. We will be holding those applications. We will also, we will also look to see, you know, the process of individuals as they post the application and make sure that those applications are complete. Also, we'll work with you to ascertain whether or not we would accept anyone, any applications that would go beyond a particular deadline as it relates to submission of credentials for the position. In terms of assisting, and NESTEC's support of assisting the work of the initial interviews and the finalists. So one of the things I said before is creating a screening committee, a committee that is made up of representatives of this community, where you allow a diversity of voices to come forward, to sit on that group. Somewhere between six to nine is usually a good number. And again, having representatives, individuals who are in leadership roles in the district, potential members of the, of the committee, folks that are engaged in support services, union-level leadership at whatever bargaining units that you have in, in the district. Also critical to make sure that those folks are, are part of that. We would come in and facilitate two separate workshops with those individuals. Those individuals who would make up that screening committee would have the opportunity to look at, through a portal, they would have the opportunity to look at what is submitted to us at NESTEC. That group would then, would then make selections via, via a survey, an anonymous survey process, where they would rank the individuals who had submitted. So that they, through the ranking process of the individuals that have submitted, they would then determine who they would like to interview. We would then work with them to potentially develop questions, but we would not be sitting in the actual interviews. One of the things that NESTEC has found is that we were actually, as consultants, sitting in the interview, that the candidates may turn to us thinking that we, we're the person that's going to be voting them in or out. So it's really, really important that we facilitate the work and support the work of the screening committee, so that they can actually engage in that. Once the committee has determined that they, they have a series of candidates, a slate of candidates that they would like to interview, one of the things that we encourage is that you would, you would make sure that members who are going to participate in the screening committee, in the screening committee, that that group is able to make the commitment for every single night. Because if you're having multiple individuals who are going to come forward that are going to be interviewed, we want to make sure that the same group is sitting in front of them for every candidate. That's critical. And the reason I say that is, is that, as I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, this time of year gets to be very hectic very quickly. I don't have to tell you that, you know, budget is in front of you. There are, you know, what, what seems to be on the surface of, of being a school committee member, where you only have two meetings a month or one meeting a month, that goes out the window in the spring when it comes to the number of things that you have to do. So when, when individuals are thinking about joining the screening committee, we would want to make sure that they are able to commit to those dates. And again, we have materials. You've had the opportunity to see the materials that we have as templates, but you invite members of the community to participate on those screening committees. One of the things that I didn't mention, and I'll go back to it quickly, is that while we are going through the, the community forums, while we're engaged in those forums, whether they're online or they're on the ground, we are also posting, you will also have the opportunity to post a community survey. So we'll use both the survey, the survey has open-ended questions as well. Both the survey and those forums will be used to develop that candidate profile. I neglected to mention that. I apologize for that. So once the screening committee has its set of candidates, it interviews those candidates. One of the things that we like to recommend is that they, after the screening committee has had the opportunity to do that, that they then would recommend to you, the school committee, three to five candidates that you would then interview. And again, we would not be sitting in those interviews with you. You, we would certainly help you and support you as you, as you craft that process. That's certainly something that we would do, but we would not be actually sitting in that interview. As it relates to final candidates, districts do a variety of different processes related to, to having final candidates. Some districts like to invite those candidates in to do a day in district. It just depends on what, on, on what your pleasure is. Obviously, we don't need a, a decision on that this evening. It's something to consider. The other thing that we like to impress upon committees, screening and, and school committees, is that when you have individuals who are going through this process, that we are, up until they are actual finalists in front of you, we need to protect the confidentiality and anonymity of these, of these candidates. That's critical. That's absolutely critical. So that is obviously going to be first and foremost on our mind when we, when we talk to the screening committee. Obviously, you deal with that all the time in your role as a, as a, as a school board member. So one of the other things that I, I, I need to continue to impress upon you is that this really is your search. I am here to support you in whatever way you think is going to be best to get you, the best candidate person, to lead this district. So, you know, you can see the timeline. You can see my description of the factors that are within that timeline. It is, you know, like I said before, it's robust. It's, it is an aggressive timeline. We certainly can adjust it as, as necessary. Some searches go 120 days. That's going to put, put us out into the middle of, of the summer, which, again, we're, we're going to be looking at potential candidates in the same timeframe that a variety of other districts are looking for them. So this seems to be, from what I can tell, this seems to be optimal at this point in time. The appointment would be, obviously, working back 90 days from the 17th. The assumption is, is that you would, you would want a candidate to start July 1. You would want that person to start July 1. Now, obviously, the finalist, whoever that person is, would need to negotiate in terms of, you know, what that particular start date would be. The other thing to consider as well, as I, as I mentioned before, there are a number of different districts that are looking for school superintendents. Districts, some choose to put the salary, some choose to put the salary range. That's up to you as to, you know, what your preference would be for that. Those, as you can imagine, post-COVID, those ranges have changed significantly, especially in the last two or three years, with movement that has taken place, not only in this state, but also the surrounding states, in terms of what the price point is and what the market price is for those individuals that seek to be school superintendents. So with that, I know I've been doing a lot of talking without a lot of water, so I will, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I certainly would be more than happy to entertain them now.
So we'll go down the line, starting with Jocelyn, if you have any questions.
I do, actually. It's just something that jumped out at me with the warranty, if I can speak to that.
Sure.
Okay. So there's language in here that I found very fascinating. If, after due consideration, the school committee determines that it does not wish to appoint any of the candidates who have applied, NESTEC will conduct a follow-up search for the same position and will provide consulting and support services at no cost. Have you ever been in that situation before?
Me personally?
In this role?
No. NESTEC, NESTEC has specific, specific districts. I could not tell you off the top of my head. I haven't, I have not done that. I have, I will share with you, I've had to do that as a school superintendent with building-level positions and redo them. But that's, obviously, it's a different dynamic there. But yes, I have had to do that. that before.
It just, you know, what you've stressed several times is that there are other districts looking. So it's going to be a busy season, there are positions open elsewhere. We know people do a Google search, we have challenges in this community, so I appreciate so much this professional process and how wide of a net that you cast, because we obviously want the best candidate and with other positions open, we're going to be.
And I, just to kind of build off what you were asking as well, one of the things that we, we ask, we asked two questions during the, during the focus groups, and it's also on the, on the survey as well. The two questions are simply this, what are the skills, competencies, habits of mind, knowledge, experience that you want to see in the next leader of the Tiverton Public Schools? And the second question is this, what are the immediate tasks and challenges that that person is going to have to grapple with? So those two questions, which are, as you can imagine, very broad, but at the same time, they really get to the heart of what you're looking for and what that person is looking for in a, in a district as they, as they pursue a role.
Thank you.
One question I have is how is the screening committee developed?
So that again is, is up to you. You would, you would put a, districts have put out, there's a sample template letter that you would put out to the community stating that you're looking for members of the screening committee, that you're looking to fill those slots, and that ultimately you would make the selection and determine who would be on that, on that group. Being cognizant of the fact that at the end of the day, all of you are going to be interviewing the candidates that are screened and brought to you.
Okay. Thank you.
This contract is for six focus groups?
Yes.
So you have two that are a screening committee. So the other four focus groups would be consisting of what?
I'm sorry, say that again, please?
You have six focus groups, and then you said two were going to be screening committee? You were going to use two for screening committees? And then, so I'm wondering what the other four focus groups would be used for?
No, that, that was not clear. So there's, there's six, the screening committee are two separate meetings, those, there's a separate meetings.
Okay.
The focus groups are six other meetings.
Okay.
Yes.
And who would be involved in those focus groups?
You would invite any members of the community to come, so for example, in prior districts, we would, we did, we did a focus group in the middle of the day at the, at the community senior center. And individuals from the community who were available to do that during the day would do that. We've also done focus groups in spaces not unlike this one for individuals who work in the district to be able to, you know, to, to share their, their thoughts about the next leader. So any, any, it's up to the community what you would like to see. Obviously, I will be back here and facilitating those or online facilitating them, whatever you think is best, and whatever you think the best way to get the greatest diversity of a voice that you can amplify as part of this process.
Okay. And this is, this money is it, right? There's no finder's fee? You don't take a percentage of their, their salary for?
No.
Okay.
No, any of those, any of those, Nezdeck does not.
Okay.
No, I certainly don't, no.
Okay. Will we get to see who's eliminated? When you, when you take in the applications, will we get to see?
You would not, you would not see the individuals who were eliminated through that screening process. Again, you would be, you would be relying on that screening committee to engage in that work, and you are relying on me as the facilitator and the consultant to guide that work.
Okay, I think that's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Victor, you and I have already spoken before today. We had a little bit of a phone call last week to kind of introduce you to what Tiverton is. And I've taken a look through all of these documents. It is a tight timeline, without a doubt, and I don't think that we can afford to lose any time that we have to run this very purposely and, you know, make decisions and stick with those decisions as we go. One of the things I would like to do is to ask the school committee to meet, to tackle some of these topics perhaps next week, that we, you know, people have an opportunity to think about the, the focus groups, how they would envision these focus groups happening, at a high level at least, not to, not to schedule them, but to, you know, to actually think about how they would want to, to see them broken down, because I have some thoughts and I'm sure others do as well. I also, you know, again, to the purpose of a meeting next week also would be to determine how we're going to go about this screening committee composition. Understanding that we have a limited timeline and that some of these slots on this screening committee are going to be reserved for specific employees, i.e. administrators, principals, union leads, et cetera. It, it leaves us with really only a few, if you will, openings, and I've, you know, put a lot of thought into it, and I do think that I would ask the committee members to consider, you know, who they feel might be good people to approach. We're a small town, we all know a lot of people. I'd also recommend that we consider engaging our student representative who's not with us this week, this evening, but I, I think that she would be a wonderful
That's a good idea.
Addition to that committee. So do, does the school committee have the desire to perhaps meet in a week to go through the specifics with respect to the focus group makeup, high level, and the screening committees? So can we meet a week from tonight?
Tuesday's good. I'm just going to check my calendar. I want to check here.
Sure.
Sorry, Deb.
I know, it's okay.
Aren't we already meeting then?
No.
Next Tuesday, no.
The 25th?
Nope. We moved our two meetings in March up, if you remember?
Okay.
So now we're going to add a third.
So at seven?
And it would be solely for this purpose?
Seven, 6:30.
What's your pleasure?
Six, 6:30, seven?
Let's do 6:30 if everybody, is that okay, a little bit earlier? And so Diane, you want us to be prepared, focus groups, what we'd like to see make at the six, and screening committee. Those are our two tasks, if you will.
Do you think that's a
Yeah, no.
An appropriate plan?
No, I think it's great.
Yeah, I do, yeah. I mean, you would be looking, in terms of the screening committee, you're looking to, to put not necessarily individual names but positions, a role for that.
I have roles and names in mind.
Okay.
We're in a small town.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I think any one of us could come up with, with that, and we're a small school department as well. There's only so many administrators, only so many principals, so.
Just, I mean, if you were to, if you were to go the route of putting roles up there, I mean, obviously, given, given size, you would only have so many individuals that were actually engaged in that role
Yep.
In the district. So that's something to consider as well. List the roles that you want in terms of representation, and then send something out to see what the, what the response would be for that. I have done that before. We have also, you know, we've done that in, in prior districts and individuals.
We've also had, I've also received emails from a number of people who have offered to, to join in on this, really for the last several months.
And I think in that packet, you had a pretty comprehensive
Yes.
Pretty broad list
Right.
Kind of covering everyone.
Right.
Okay. So keeping that in mind.
I mean, as you all are acutely aware, school systems are highly complex, multimillion-dollar organizations, so having as wide a representation as you can, given the number, and obviously you have to balance that with the, the other opportunities to elevate and amplify voice that are brought forth by the, by the survey and the forms that you're going to schedule.
So the 25th at 6:30?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll work to get that agenda out.
Do you want to approve the liaison this evening?
Yeah, I think that would be the other thing that we would like to tackle this evening. I will happily offer my services if the school committee agrees.
I'll make a motion to appoint Diane Fardenworth as the liaison between the school committee and Nezdeck, Mr. Mc, Doctor, sorry, Macario.
Any discussion?
Are you going to be sharing what you receive from Dr. Macario?
Oh, 100%. I think that's, you know, I, I can assure you all, that is, communication in this process is the utmost priority. Communication between Victor and myself, myself and all of you, and all of us and our community. Keeping this as a transparent process, keeping it as a very well-run process, I think is very important. And I am willing to dedicate my time and effort to doing that, and if you guys are not happy with the way I'm doing it, please tell me. I am open to that feedback as we go. So do I have agreement? All those in favor? Kim, you know? Okay. 4-1. I will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the school department liaison position is concerned?
I'm assuming you have someone with whom you, you work.
We have an assistant superintendent who is also our director of special ed, Mrs. Crager. She's not with us this evening, she typically would be. I have spoken with her and she has agreed to take on that role. So does anyone have any objections to appointing Sarah to that role?
Do you have, just, just so that I'm clear, do you have, as a, as a board, do you have additional administrative clerical support for you in your role?
No.
Okay.
We will be relying on district role, district staff
Understood.
In their graciousness.
Understood, thank you.
In their spare time.
In their spare time, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. So do we want to take a vote to appoint Sarah as the school department liaison? And she would be helping to set up meetings, helping to get information.
This, just so that I'm clear, this individual is not a candidate in this process, correct?
She has indicated to me that she is not.
Say that again, please?
She has indicated to me that she is not.
Okay.
So what's the role?
I wouldn't suggest her if, if that were the case.
What's this person doing that you're not?
She's, she's boots on the ground here in the district.
Oh, okay.
So you have, I mean, there are, the, the items, the, the digital documents that are on your website, we would obviously rely on you to, to, to post them. You would need a liaison, someone who's doing that work in the district
Ah, gotcha.
To be able to post those announcements.
And then she may, she could help coordinate the meeting rooms and
And things like that.
Things like that for you.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
That's the idea.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah as the school department liaison.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Deb, did you, I can't see you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. That's a 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hoping we can perhaps accelerate the timeline, just because that's who I am, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. It's all going to be a matter of how well we all work together here and, and see this process through. So I do thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Macario before he, before we call it a day here?
When are you going to start posting the position?
As you can see by the timeline, within the next five days
Okay.
To post it.
Do you, I'm sorry, we're going to need the salary by then, is that something we're going to have to discuss?
I don't need that to post the position.
That was my question.
Right, to, to make, to, to broadcast that you, that we're looking for someone, I don't need that, right.
That's fine without the salaries, okay, thank you.
But we will have to have that discussion next week, perhaps, or in exact if we
Sure. So post for that.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice of you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we, we are scheduled, again, we will be meeting next week for this discussion. Our next regular meeting is April 8th, and then another followed on April 22nd.
Are we going to reconvene into executive?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes. I'm at this time going to adjourn the open meeting and go back into executive session.
Come on up, Jen.
I just have a question as you go to choose
Hang on a second, Elaine's talking at the same time, sorry.
Go ahead, Jen.
Hi, Elaine.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have a question about the subcommittee and the screening committee as you go forward with a search. So as I'm looking at the list, I think you have a nice mix of community members, but I have some questions when we get to parents, because it lists like an elementary parent, a middle school parent, and a high school parent. However, with the reconstructuring that we're now doing with the fourth, next year, the fourth grade would be at the middle school, I think to throw out a suggestion that those parents should still be, that we should have a parent in that grade group specifically added to this list so that they don't get lost into the middle school model or they're not lost in the elementary school model because, and let them give their feedback for what they expect as they're transitioning.
Good suggestion, yeah.
And then also too, it says in here, one teacher from a level different than the principal, but I would assume that also too, we, like the need of an elementary school, the need of a middle school, the need of a changing middle school.
The thing we're into though, Jen, is that this has to be a small committee.
Yeah, you can't have that many people, yeah.
No, I know, I just want to make sure that there's some kind of, especially for our parents that are already transitioning, and that the needs for each one of our schools as they're also transitioning, that we don't have just one teacher representation or one parent group represented.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge is going to be, and we'll certainly discuss that next week, is his recommendation really was, his was actually lower. Well, it was nine to 11, he actually said
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Yeah, that's wow.
So that's the challenge, is, is, you know, if you want an administrator, if you want a business leader, if you want, you know, a teacher, if you want a parent, if you want, you know, to try to get all those in and to keep it manageable, you know, we're going to have to, we'll do the best we can, but I, I do think the, the point about that grade is very well taken.
Because they don't, they're not kind of, they're being
They're in between right now.
They're in limbo.
So like that, then they should have a representation for that model.
Yep, no, very, very great point.
But I think we do have a number of community members that can actually fill those roles from a
Yeah, maybe.
A different
And some carry more than one half.
Multiple roles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly, have a representative or a business owner, also a grandparent.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You have, you may have
Exactly.
Yeah.
Excellent, I appreciate it.
Good point. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to recess, to Mrs. Pavel's point, our open session and go back into executive session, at which point we will adjourn after, after our executive session. So thank you.